All right, folks. Good evening and welcome to April 24th, regular meeting of council, beginning at 7:00 PM. There are a couple of changes to the agenda, just a couple of add-ins. One, council, you receipt that at your desk tables. It was a memo that was added in, and I'd like to see that added in at 7.2.4. And then the other one was on our corrected and updated agenda. There was a late addition that had got missed, and that was under Planning and Land Use, item 7.1.2 was added in after the agenda was publicized and updated. So with those two additions, looking for approval of the agenda.
Move approval as amended, Your Worship.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving on to public participation. This is a time for anyone in the audience that has or would like to address council. Your time. You're all so quiet. Just for the benefit of anybody being shy, we'll ask you one more time. Seeing nothing, we'll move along. Thank you. Mayor's message. There's been a busy weekend. Not only was it Earth Hour or Earth Weekend. We do have coming forward, or Sunday, the Callwood Fire Department was working hard on washing cars out there for the benefit of the Wounded Warriors Program, and they raised approximately $1,170 for that event. And so to the brothers and the sister of Callwood Fire Department, we congratulate them on their efforts on that fundraiser. Reminder, Yard Cleanup Drop-Off Program is expanded for this weekend. This is the big spring cleanup one, so there's a big, long list on our website as to what's acceptable and what is not, running April 28th and 29th this weekend. Also, thank you to Counselor Day for attending the volunteer, RCMP Volunteer Dinner that is scheduled for April 28th. Volunteers are always a hard-sought commodity in the community, and we value their work that they do. Council will be, or some of us will be attending McCappy Days, May the 3rd, at our local McDonald's. Also, May 3rd, there's a West Shore Parks and Rec Skateboard Users Group. They're trying to get the skateboard park worked up into play, so that's on from 6:30 to 8:30 at West Shore Parks and Rec. Emergency Fair at West Shore Parks and Rec on May the 7th. That's always a great venue to see the fire trucks and aerial ladders and a number of other pieces of equipment in operation. What's happening right now is our Community Tree Art Program, Art Tree with Canada 150. So we, all of our entries are down at Coast Collective, and there is an online voting. I understand that Callwood School and, or no.
Sangster.
Sangster School and Wish Art School are neck and neck. So we'll see what comes out of that one. And something that's new coming out to, again, West Shore Parks and Rec. Kinsman Field House on Wednesday evenings from 5 till 8, from June till September. There is a summer market. So I don't know what that's going to have all involved down there, but I'm looking forward to seeing what they bring to the market. And anybody else for, I know Counselor Nolte?
I had the pleasure last Wednesday of attending the kickoff for Bike to Work Week. It runs this year from May 29th to June 4th. I encourage you all to cycle wherever you have to go or wherever you possibly can. Remember those dates and looking forward to cycling into council.
And that includes Counselor Chong, I know. Anybody else for this week? Nope, good. We'll move on. Adoption of one set of minutes, please, for the regular meeting of council for April the 10th.
Move adoption?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Move receipt, please, for Heritage Commission Minutes of March the 8th.
Move receipt.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving then into item 5 on our agenda. We have a presentation from MMP, Cory Vanderhorst.
There we go. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. The year goes by pretty quick, and here we are again, and I'll take you through the 2016 financial statements and our audit findings. I'm happy to answer questions as we go or at the end. And a quick rundown of the agenda there. We'll talk about the statements themselves, go through some of my audit findings, and then wrap up with some trend analysis and look at how the numbers are moving over the last few years at the city. So just a reminder that the financial statements that you have there are consolidated. So it's 100% of the city's operations, and it's a proportionate share of West Shore Parks and Rec. And that proportion changes a little bit every year, but it was 22.34% for 2016. So if you go and look at West Shore Parks and Rec's statements, you've got about 22% of those numbers showing up in your books, with the exception of the adjustment for the contribution that you make to West Shore every year. So looking first at the Statement of Financial Position, what we used to call the balance sheet. We put this up here with two years of presentation, year 2016 and 2015. So a snapshot of what was in the accounts at the end of December 31st. You can see cash and investments at the city have moved from $20.4 million to $27.2 million. Total financial assets, cash, receivables, and other things that can be readily converted into cash are up from $22.5 to $29 million. The debt and leases and equipment financing is $13.9 million, so a small increase from 2015. And total liabilities have moved from $24.3 to $28 million. But if we take the total liabilities, or sorry, take the total financial assets, subtract off the total liabilities, you can see there, you've moved into a net financial asset position. So out of a net debt position of $1.7 million to a financial asset position of $972,000. So what that means now, you've moved out of this position of taxing to pay for the past into having some resources available for future projects and programming. And that, discussing with staff further today, if you look back at 2008, '09, '10, and along, the net debt position has been decreasing steadily. It was quite high four or five years ago, and the first year in the last five, or maybe more, that you're into a net financial asset position. So that's a healthy position for the city.
Could I just add one comment to that? So I had a look because I was excited to see a positive number for the first time ever in years. In 2009, we had a net debt of $15 million. So it's been steadily decreasing, so it's really nice to see a positive number in there. Thanks, Cory.
And then rounding out the Statement of Financial Position, you can see the physical assets, what we call tangible capital assets at the city, have moved down from $142.3 million to $141.3. Really, what that means is that they're being depreciated faster than your new purchases in 2016. And accumulated surplus is up to $143.2 million. In a future slide, I'll get into what's in that number.
Cory?
Yeah.
Can you just, sorry, could you just explain the difference for me between liability and debt? What's wrapped up into that liability that isn't debt?
Great. So that's your accounts payable, your trade payables, current things, employee future benefits, things like accrued sick and severance, and other long-term awards in there. Deferred revenue, anything that you've received money in the past, but it's for a future project, or DCCs, development cost charges that are collected and will be paid out in the future. So those are all wrapped up in that total liability number, and they aren't specifically long-term debt or capital leases.
So, and I'll ask this through you to staff, or maybe you're going to answer this later in the presentation, so I'll be quiet. But if I'm looking at debt, I'm basically seeing a $1.4 million increase in our debt from 2015 to 2016, but our liability has gone up close to $4 million, which suggests about a $2.5 million increase in liability excluding debt.
Yeah.
So when will you address that?
Well, it's not specifically in the slides, but I can address it, and then I'll defer to staff. It's primarily coming in two places. There's a deferred revenue increase of about $1.4 million, so money for future projects. And there's a refundable deposit increase of about $1.2 million. So with a lot of the development that's going on, those refundable deposits, landscaping bonds, development bonds, those type of things, that will be released when those projects are completed. Those are up at this point in time. It's kind of a temporary, we cut off at December 31st, so that number's higher. But those are cash-in and cash-out when the projects are done. So that gives you an idea of that. Okay, so I'll move next to the Statement of Operations, what we used to call the income statement. You can see there, total revenues for 2016 were $22 million. So that is above budget. You look at 2015's actual was 26.7. So it looks like a $4 million decrease. But really, what's happening in 2015 is the effect of an adjustment we've made this year. In the course of the audit this year, we're having conversations with staff about the progress that's being made in planning and engineering and in capturing the information for a lot of the subdivision development that's going on. Turns out, as we go through that conversation, the city hadn't been recording some of the contributed tangible capital assets. So when developer puts in a subdivision, they put in roads, sewer lines, water lines, sidewalks, streetlights. Going back to 2013, that had been missed, hadn't been reported. So we went back, we took a look at '13, '14, '15, and '16, discovered that in '13, '14, there's about $1 million of assets to add. In '15, there's $6 million of assets that were added to the books. So that goes into that revenue line, because it's a contributed revenue item. And 2016 had about $558,000. So it looks like a $4 million decrease. It's primarily physical assets that the city took on and will have to maintain and keep up those assets in the future. But that's what's driving most of that change from 2015 to 2016. On the expense side of things, total expenses were $20.4 million against a budget of $18.6, and 2015's actual expenses was $19.5. So the annual surplus on an accounting basis was $1.4 million. 2015, it was $7.2. Again, $6 million of that $7.2 last year was contributed physical assets that we record as capital asset and as a revenue when it's received. So this dives into the Statement of Operations a little bit more. So the annual surplus has gone down, $5.7 million. As I mentioned, it's a decrease in developer contributions. That year-over-year decrease was $4.7 million. When you compare to the 2015 expenses, which also factors into that $5.7 million decrease in annual surplus, we see increases in protective services costs and engineering and transportation. And that's a year-over-year increase of just shy of a million dollars, at $925,000. In addition, in that number is your change in your share of West Shore. So as I mentioned, that percentage changes every year. So that year-over-year decrease represented $107,000. This slide shows you a little bit of where the revenues are coming from. You can see the big blue bar, that's your tax revenues. That's the largest source of revenue for the city. Followed in 2016 by the user charges. And then all the other amounts were quite minor. In 2015, you can see that lighter blue line of developer contributions is much bigger because of the $6 million of developer contributions. On the expense side of things, in here, we see protective services are the largest expense. It's just over $6 million in 2016, followed by the engineering and transportation services, so road maintenance and some of those things. And then parks and recreation is the third highest, being a large chunk of that being the West Shore Parks and Rec. So I mentioned that that was an accounting surplus number a few slides back. I like to look at the cash flows to see what actually went in and out of the bank accounts, because we accountants like to do a lot of adjustments to the income statement. So you can see that operations at the city brought in $6.3 million. Capital used $1.1 million. Financing was a net inflow of $1.5, which gets to the increase in debt that Counselor Martin alluded to. And so there's a net cash inflow to the main bank accounts of $6.8 million last year. Cash and investments on that first slide is $27.2 million. However, there's a lot of it that's already earmarked for projects. You can see there's deferred revenue of $6.7. There's the refundable deposits of $2.9 million. There's just over $8 million set aside in reserves. And the current payables, if you take the accounts payable and ignore the employee future benefits, which are a long-term payable, that's $3.6 million. So subtracting all those numbers out of the $27 million, you get about $5.9 million left at the end of the day. And the accumulated surplus, which is $143.2 million, is comprised mostly of the investment in capital assets. There's the $8 million in reserves, and then there's other accumulated surplus of $5.4 million. So the invested in capital assets is the book value of those assets, $141,000, minus the debt of $13.9, plus there's about $2.4 million of debt proceeds that has yet to be spent, and that was sitting in the cash accounts at the end of the year. It actually doesn't represent funds held, other than the $2.4. It represents the physical assets that are used to provide services for the city. And the reserves of $8 million are the amounts that are set aside by council through the approved by the reserves for future expenditures. So that's my run-through of the numbers. Are there any questions on the numbers before I move into some of the audit discussion?
Sure. Sorry. Would you mind going back about three slides for me? One more. One more. There it is. So the provided used by financing?
Yeah.
I'm trying to understand, there's $1.5 million?
Yeah.
This year? But there was a cash, what, one for 2015? The parenthesis is throwing me off.
Yeah, that's cash outflow, and that's pay-down of debt on schedule. I think if you look, sorry, I'm going to, excuse me for a second while I look up some of the details for you. 2015 had capital lease payments of $300,000 and debt payments of $700,000 for the $1 million. In 2016, there's $2.4 million of debt proceeds. There's $96,000 of debt payment on the capital leases and another 700 on debt. So I'm netting those transactions that are going on. In 2015, it's $1 million of outflow?
Yeah.
To pay down debt. 2016, it's $2.4 in and $800,000 out to pay debt. So the debt's being paid down on schedule, and there's a new portion of debt in 2016.
Go ahead, ask it.
No. I'm good. Trying to do the math on that.
Sorry, well, Rob, thank you. Maybe I could get you to back up a couple more slides. There was something I wanted to ask you about, and now I've forgotten what it was called. Maybe one more back? Yep. Hang on. Maybe one forward there? No, I've lost it. But like Rob, I get thrown off by the brackets. I have a few questions on the statements that were prepared, but I'll wait till you finish.
So if I can follow up on the second question then. So can you, the annual surplus for 2015 was $7.2 million, but you said this year is 8-point-something?
The annual surplus is $7.2. The 2016 is $1.4, the number right above it there. 1, 4, 4, 9.
For 2016?
Yeah, 2016.
So it should be 8.6?
Well, we're not adding those together. I'm showing on the right column there, I'm showing the 2016 numbers, and the 2015 as a comparison to, so that you can see what's the difference year-over-year between those amounts.
Okay, so the surplus was $1.44 million, correct?
Your total...
In total was $7.2 million? Or am I misreading that?
No. Your 2015 annual surplus on here is $7.2 million. So that goes into the 141 accumulated.
That's last year's, yeah.
Yeah, that's last year's. And then the $1.4 is this year's, and that also gets added into the $140 million of accumulated surplus. So those two amounts both go into the bottom line.
But didn't you tell us, didn't you just tell us that $6 million of that surplus went off the books?
$6 million of that surplus is on the books as capital assets.
So it's really not $7.2. It's $1.2, isn't it?
It's $7.2 million according to the accounting standards, because we put the physical assets through as surplus when they are contributed by outside parties. You didn't purchase them directly, they came as a contribution.
Okay. Thank you.
This may be a great opportunity to look at Note 8 of the financial statements. It shows a breakdown of the accumulated surplus.
Can you just point us where Note 8 would be found?
Page 161 of your package, or sorry, page 61.
That's if you've got the printed one. I'm just trying to find Note 8.
It's page 17 of the financial statements. You should be able to see those page numbers on your iPad.
6... So we, just to be clear, Jen, Note 8 is accumulated surplus? Is that the one we're looking at?
That's correct.
So on our iPads, folks, it's actually, of course, now it's going to be... Page 21 of 30? I found it there.
Okay. So what this note is showing you, one, it itemizes the portion of accumulated surplus that relates to the city's reserve funds. So in 2016, you can see that our reserve funds grew by almost $1 million, moving from just over $7 million in 2015 to just over $8 million. And then the top portion of the note shows the breakdown of our accumulated surplus between what we have invested in our tangible capital assets. And the majority of the balance is our accumulated operating surplus. And it's that swing in the operating surplus that is what we tend to focus on throughout the year as we're providing you with budget versus actual information. And earlier last month, when we spoke about our anticipated surplus, we mentioned it was approximately $750,000 or so. And that figure there is the difference between the operating fund accumulated surplus, if we look year-over-year. And so once we were finished accounting for the year, that surplus came in closer to about $500,000 and change. And that is a true cash surplus. Because as Cory mentioned, we have a number of non-cash adjusting entries that we are required to make. And one of the largest adjusting entries that we made was that of the contributed tangible capital assets. So we're required to recognize that revenue, a developer contribution, even though it's not cash. It's revenue that is in the form of a capital asset. And so that skews your annual surplus that you see on the face of the Statement of Operations. But that change here, on the operating fund surplus, that is the cash surplus for the city.
Anything else? You're good? Counselor Day?
So if I understood you correctly, then looking at Note 8, the operating fund accumulated surplus, general operating and sewer operating, would represent a cash balance? And that would be $5.8 million?
That's the accumulated surplus. So the annual surplus for the year, if we take the 2016 figure of $5.779 million and subtract the 2015 of $5.194, our annual operating surplus came in at approximately $584,000. Of that surplus, $40,000 related to our sewer operating fund and the balance related to our general operating fund. So we had a couple minor year-end adjusting entries to make with respect to accrued wages for staff and some nominal year-end accruals to our vendors, which explains the detail that we went over early March, that decrease from an anticipated $700,000 surplus, and it came in just under $600,000. And that's the cash surplus.
Good, thanks, Cory.
Okay, thank you. I'll carry on then and get into some of the audit details. So you've got a draft set of statements in front of you, which is our standard procedure. The audit's done. We're happy to report another clean audit opinion, or what we call an unqualified audit opinion. So we're satisfied that these kind of statements are not materially misstated. And just waiting for the wrap-up things that we always have. Counsel approval at the end of the audit. Finals in the financial statements, which they are in their final form right now. And we've just got the last legal confirmations in today, so I'm happy to say that that part is wrapped up. So our responsibilities in the course of the audit, we look at the controls in place at the city to ensure that you're getting accurate natural results here. We sample transactions throughout the year, and we don't look at every transaction that happens at the city. And we're ready to sign after council reviews and approves its statements. And the materiality that was used this year was $700,000. So that is a percentage of your total revenues. Pause for a question.
Just on the materiality, that's changed quite significantly over the years. I believe when we started with you, I think our materiality was in the $300,000 range. So could you just explain that for me?
Great question. So materiality, as a, sort of jump into a high-level concept, is theoretically the dollar value which would change a user's decision, and the users being the mayor and council sitting at the table. What would change a decision that you're making when you're looking at budget time or other financial matters? So you're right, that number has increased, both as a factor of us as auditors coming in and how comfortable we are with the numbers we're seeing and the results and the controls. The other thing that happened last year is that MMP, as a firm trying to make sure you are getting the most efficient and appropriate audit, took a look at what's going on in the marketplace, the audit marketplace, and what materiality levels are being used, and determined that our rate, we used to do half to 2% of revenue, was too low for the market. All the other audit firms are doing higher ratios. So we bumped our standard rates to 2% to 4% of revenue. And I believe your $700,000 comes in at about 3%, 3.2%, somewhere in that mark. So right in the middle of that range of comfort. And that's the explanation for the reason of increasing up to $700,000.
Anyone else? See them?
So during the audit, we discussed matters with Andrea and Jen, management and staff in other departments. Lots of staff, I'd like to specifically thank Helen Lockhart for the assistance with the developer contributed assets that we were putting together that information. We'll confirm that MMP is independent of the city. As of today's date, we didn't do any other work or projects that would impair that independence. And I'll wrap up with a look at some of the trends, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions after that. So we start by looking at sustainability, the degree to which the city can maintain your existing financial obligations, so debt levels and current payables, without increasing debt or tax on the residents. So we focus in on assets to liabilities. And as we mentioned already, we've moved from a net debt position into a net financial asset position. So your assets to liabilities ratio was greater than 1. It's been above 6 for the last five years. This first ratio includes the physical assets. So it's been in a healthy position. If we zero in on the financial assets, we want to see that ratio above 1. We want to see a net financial asset position. And you're now at that just over 1 mark, which, as I mentioned earlier, what that means is if you're under 1, you're taxing in the future to pay for past activities. When you're over 1, you've got some resources available to pay for future projects. The next area we look at is flexibility, the degree that you might be able to change your debt or tax burden and meet existing obligations. So we look at the public debt charges, So we look at the public debt charges, really the interest charges on the debt, and compare that to your total revenue. This ratio's been fairly steady over the last few years, between 2% and 3%. In 2016, it's 2.6. So a fairly steady ratio is a good number. You don't want to see it climbing heavily, because that means you're incurring lots of new debt, and it might not be sustainable. And the other area we look at in flexibility is around the physical assets, tangible capital assets. We like to compare the carrying value on the books, right, the depreciated value, to what the original cost was. So for the city, the ratio's been slowly declining. In 2010, it was 77%. It's now down to around 73%. So what that means is that the value of the assets is getting, or the assets are getting older, and your future costs of capital are, are increasing, as you'd expect if you wanted to go out and do a new sewer line or road. Those costs keep increasing, and some of the existing assets in infrastructure are aging, because that number is declining. And the last area we look at is vulnerability. And we're looking at other government funding, whether it's provincial or, or federal funding for infrastructure projects or other. So this often fluctuates. 2013, 2012, we're about 11%. And then from 2014 to this year, it's been around 6%. So your, your vulnerability to government funding, other government funding, has been low. And the high percentage years are, we often see big capital projects that get infrastructure funding, and that's when you see the numbers start to climb. So that, we, we haven't seen very large projects in the last few years. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and I'll open it up for any further questions.
Anyone? Counselor Day?
Thanks, I have a few kind of little detailed questions. But one thing that occurred to me was, you have presented in camera before. And the last couple of years, you haven't been doing that. Is there a particular reason? You're just more comfortable now, or? Because I know it's not all that common, but I'd like to hear your reasoning.
Sure. Traditionally, and following the legislation, going in camera would be personnel, or, or places, or things that need to be confidential in nature. I haven't requested to go in camera, because I haven't had issues that I felt needed to go in camera to, to follow the legislation and to stay within the regulations. So that, it could be viewed as a good thing that we haven't had to sue the public for any of those conversations.
Can I follow up with a couple of details?
Sure.
Just on the, I guess it's your audit findings report, Appendix C, Summary of Significant Differences. It, about the third line down on Differences Noted, says additional amortization to record in 2016 from developer tangible capital assets. That was the sidewalks and the roads that hadn't been recognized before.
Yeah, that's right.
And below that, at the bottom of the page, it said, "Management has decided not to correct the identified differences that remain unadjusted." They have said that, in their judgment, the unadjusted differences are, both individually and together, not material to the financial statements. So is that more roads and sidewalks to be recognized, or?
No, I'll, I'll clarify it. So the top table there is amounts that were adjusted. The management did make those entries. The, the bottom table there is the unadjusted portions, which doesn't include, does not include any of those roads and sidewalks and things. I mentioned earlier that $700,000 materiality level. I can give a clean audit opinion, as long as the unadjusted numbers are below $700,000. So this one item here was, was brought forward by management close to the end of the audit. And because it was a small enough number, we didn't require an adjustment. But it is not specifically related to the developer contributions. I'll let the staff talk a little bit.
Just to add to that discussion, you may see on the table itself that management will be making the adjustment in 2017.
Thank you, that's all I have. Anyone else?
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
If I could just remind the chair that we are now looking for a recommendation on the financial statements. There was a brief report in your package with a proposed recommendation in there.
At this point, or is it in, in, in the next one? Andrea? I thought I'd saw, I thought I had seen something in there too, and I can't find it in this, when I updated, my highlighter went away.
The memo was included as Item 5.2. I'm not certain what number that is on your iPad there. But ultimately, we are looking for counsel to approve the 2016 consolidated financial statements and to provide authority to our CAO and our Director of Finance to sign those financial statements.
But that's in 5.2?
Yep.
Correct? So, so 5.1 that we just finished is simply the presentation preceding?
Yes.
5.2?
The presentation is under both Item 5.1 and 5.2.
Okay. So we will move into, Counselor Day?
Sorry, just wondering, because both 5.1 and 5.2 list our auditor as presenting. I was also confused by that reading of our agendas, because there's the audit findings report, and then there's the draft consolidated financial statements. So is there a second presentation, is my question for the auditor, before he goes up?
No, I don't think so.
No, the auditor just did the presentation of both the audit findings and the financial statements.
So the presentation was part A?
Okay, makes it hard to ask questions if there's two items. You know, we're following our agenda. And when you combine them at the table, that makes it very hard to follow.
Do we need to keep Corey till we get through 5.2 then?
Yeah, by all means. Is there additional questions on the financial statements?
Maybe hang tight, Cor, if you can. So I'm taking as 5.1 as being simply a presentation, and then we'll move into 5.2. And even though it says presentation in the header, we're actually in the discussion part.
So, under the consolidated financial statements, there's a couple of questions that I had. On page 7, it, and actually also further on as well, it talks about prepaid expenses. And I just don't understand what prepaid expenses would be.
An example of the city's prepaid expenses would be a number of city or employee membership dues that span beyond the calendar year and are typically paid within a calendar year. And insurance is another example.
Right, okay, that makes sense to me. And then on, also on page 7, just trying to get to the right spot. We have a... Sorry, can't get everything working here at the same time. There is a discussion about the use of estimates and a reference to contaminated sites. I wasn't aware that we had any contaminated sites. Is that just boilerplate?
That's correct. The city does not have any contaminated sites. And there's no liability disclosed.
Great. And then on page 8, there are a couple of numbers that were in brackets that I just don't... Now I can't find them, of course. Sorry, the iPads are very frustrating. I can see the notes, but I can't see it in, in the thing. The, it's bracket 200,689 and bracket 152,602. And I just...
Did that come out of a table, Counselor Day, or was it?
It's supposed to be right on the page, but...
And it's not referring you back?
Sorry, this is one of the notes to the financial statements?
No, it's, it's page 4 on the consolidated statements.
There we go.
Printed.
Sorry, just jumped to a completely different page.
Page 4 of printed?
Actuarial adjustment to debt.
That's what it is.
Yes, so that is our statement of cash flows. So when we're determining the cash that's generated by the city's operating activities, we first take our annual surplus. And that's calculated under PSAB standards. And then we have to add back all of our non-cash adjustments. One of those non-cash adjustments that we're required to make is recognizing some revenue that is, it's a non-cash adjustment that's related to actuarial earnings on our debt holdings with the MFA. So that's the adjustment there.
Okay.
Reducing our surplus for that non-cash revenue that we were required to recognize.
All right, I can follow that. Giving up on going to my quick reference guide. Now, on the bottom, bottom of page 5, under deferred revenue, it's talking about amounts received from third parties. So is that talking about our deposits in, for sidewalk improvements where they haven't been done yet, or?
More so speaking to city's revenue that we have not yet recognized, such as conditional government grants, gas tax dollars.
Sorry, I thought it was going to be much faster, because I had made my notes and I thought it would just bang through them, but it hasn't worked that way. I think I'm going back to paper very soon. Oh, I know what my question is. On page 17, West Shore Parks and Rec is, just above that, the internal financing is in brackets. And I'm just, I didn't quite get it.
No, thank you. The intention there is to highlight that the city has been using its own funds to finance the debt costs related to the Callwood Central local area. So a portion of the sewer infrastructure was constructed some years ago, going back a decade ago. And to date, the city has not yet taxed for the costs of that area, of that local improvement. We are, this year, anticipating that we will finish the capital works, and we will start taxing next year. And we will be recovering the interest cost to date. And then we will be recovering both the interest and principal going forward over the term of the debt.
Wonderful, thank you. That makes lots more sense to me. And on page 19, again with West Shore Parks and Rec, there's an entry for $9,325. Is that revenue from West Shore Parks and Rec, or?
No, so these notes are notes to the consolidated statements. So both those lines that you see referring to West Shore Parks and Rec, that's their conditional government transfers, of which they had $0 in 2016. And West Shore Parks and Rec Society received just over $9,000 in unconditional government transfers.
Okay, so that's messing me up, that it's consolidated. And that might be the end. That's it, that was all my questions, thanks.
Anything else from counsel? Seeing nothing, then there is, on the memo, a recommendation being requested? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? And now, Corey, you're good to go. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure working with you again, and your team. And I think, you know, for many of us on counsel, we're seeing the steady improvement through this whole process. So thanks for being part of the whole plan on getting things on track. Thank you. Nothing in our correspondence this evening, folks. So moving into news business with planning and land use, first item on the agenda is 7.1.1, memo from our planner in regards to 2006 Suk Road.
Thank you, Andrea. The memorandum before you outlines a request from staff to State of Pacific total dollar amount for the financial support for Pacifica Housing's proposed affordable housing project at 2006 Suk Road. On April 10th, 2017, counsel endorsed a recommendation to provide Pacifica with $4,000 per affordable housing unit times 82 units. Staff asked that counsel clarifies this resolution by setting the contribution to the amount that would be equal through that equation to $328,000 from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. As stated, this is for budgetary purposes. The memo also clarified that the development cost charges credits are not available to this project to offset the costs of frontage improvements estimated to be approximately $130,000. In summary, staff recommend that counsel specifies a financial grant from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund in the amount of $328,000 to be provided to Pacifica, subject to the registration of a restrictive covenant, ensuring that the affordable housing units are maintained for the community. Thank you.
Move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Was there?
It's not, it's not a big deal.
You're good?
Yep.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. Item 7.1.2, this is the added-on report at 324 Goldstream Avenue. Same topic.
Thank you, Your Worship. This memo is similar in purpose to the previous item in that staff are seeking a resolution from counsel specifying a total dollar amount for budgetary purposes to be provided from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to a second affordable housing project at 324 Goldstream Avenue, being proposed by the Greater Victoria Housing Society. On April 10th, 2017, counsel endorsed a recommendation to provide $4,000 per affordable housing unit times 55 units. Since this time, the applicant has also proposed that there be an increase of the number of qualifying affordable housing units by 49 units to a total of 104 units. Previously, the 49 units were proposed to be rented at rates higher than the housing income limits used to define affordable housing. This request would unfortunately exceed the current amount in the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund. Therefore, staff recommend that the originally proposed $220,000 grant from the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund be provided, subject to a restrictive covenant. The applicant could conceivably, conceivably re-approach the city when an additional, with an additional request, when the funds in the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund become available. This fund is created out of developer contributions with which staff estimate will amount to an additional $70,000 in 2017 and approximately $38,000 in 2018. Thank you.
Move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Questions, comments? I have a question on, this will pretty much use up all of our funds going forward.
Yeah, the approach taken by staff was that the amount, almost the full amount available in the Housing Reserve Fund was divided between the two projects equally on a $4,000 per affordable housing unit basis.
Both valued additions to the community. We are also underserved in units that are affordable and available to our public. So these will be good going forward. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 7.1.3, Development Variance Permit Application for 452 Pelican Drive?
Thank you, Worship. Last week, the Planning and Land Use Committee hosted a quirky lot night, hearing three interesting applications, starting off with 452 Pelican Drive. Here, the applicant is requesting to vary Section 10.2.7 of the Callwood Land Use Bylaw by relaxing the maximum permitted building height from 8.5 meters to 10.02 meters in order to facilitate the construction of a single-family dwelling. The applicant explained that the design will work best because of the challenging grade, engineered slope, and the driveway. It was recommended by committee, and I so moved the recommendation before us. It was recommended by committee and I so moved the recommendation before us.
Second.
Questions, comments? Counselor Day?
I have concerns about this development, and in fact, in general, that houses are getting bigger and taller and that the impact on the surrounding neighborhood is noticeable. It's certainly overlooking longtime residents and I think the height differences can be very problematic. And there is becoming more and more of an assumption that houses must have suites as well as provide a large-sized home. And this particular case, the reason for the height adjustment is to allow a suite over top of the garage. And I feel that some adjustment is needed to be made for the rest of the community so that you know what to expect going up next door to you.
Any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion does carry? Looking forward to item 7.1.3? No, 7.1.4. For DVP permit, 464 Pelican Drive.
Thank you, Worship. Here, the applicant is requesting to vary section 10.2.7 of the Callwood Land Use Bylaw by relaxing the maximum permitted building height from 8.5 meters to 10.45 meters in order to facilitate the construction of a three-story walkout basement, a single-family dwelling with a secondary suite. A little twist to this one, in 2007, council approved a development variance permit prior to final subdivision approval, permitting a maximum building height increase from 8.5 meters to 10.5 meters on the condition that the highest floor level be no higher than the highest street level fronting the property. The variance was applied to lots that featured steep slopes from the street in order to allow the new homes to have a safe access and to sit more harmoniously with each other while reducing site disturbance. The applicant stated that the building height is compliant with the homes on either side of their lot, they're three-story, and that they chose the design because it works best for a small building area and provides the living area they need to raise a family. And I will point out, the last two applications are part of the subdivision that has been dormant for many years, so it's actually quite exciting to see this area of Royal Bay proceed. And there was consultation with the neighbors that did approve the design as well. There is recommended, there is a recommendation before us, and I so move. Thank you.
Seconder?
Second.
Questions? Counselor Day?
Just to clarify, my position is, again, that I don't believe we need to be moving to three-story homes. We've been a pretty much two-story community for a long time, and it is impacting people's views, their sunlight, and I think that it is not the direction I would like to see the city go.
Counselor Martin, and then Nolt.
Through the chair to staff, or Gordy, or anybody. I don't, I just don't understand, the highest floor level be no higher than the highest street level, but we're approving a two-meter increase in height. So is it 10.9 or 10.5 meters from ground level? Like, I'm getting confused on measurements and all this kind of stuff. So could somebody just clarify? Like, so if it's the highest, if the highest floor level is no higher than the highest street level, what are we approving?
Your Worship, the property in question had a variance, a historical variance, that would allow them to build to the maximum height desired, but there's also a condition that the highest floor level of the dwelling be no higher than the highest street level. So they wouldn't be able to build the two stories from the street as they proposed. It would just be one story from the street and then another story down below, where they want to have two from the street and three from down below. So the overall height isn't being varied so much as the removal of that condition for the maximum floor level height.
Sorry, I'm still confused, through the chair. I'm still confused. So if I was standing on the road at this house, am I gonna, and I realize that it's the average, but am I going to see a 10.5-meter roofline? Or am I going to see an 8.5-meter roofline?
You'll see a roofline that will not appear 10.5 from the street because it's, the height is measured from benchmark elevations that include the rear portion of the building envelope.
Right, okay. All right. Thank you. And I'm good. Yep.
Counselor Nolt, and then Logan?
Just a question that if we did defeat this is, application, they would still have the original variance from 2007, is that correct?
That is correct.
So to me, there's very little sense in voting against this because they already can build to 10.5.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. I just want to point out that these houses are going to be built in an area that is difficult terrain and steep slopes. So from the street, it will be, it will have the visual impact of two stories, which is absolutely no different than any, many other single-family lots within the city. It's the, the third story will be viewed only from behind. So really, from a streetscape aesthetic point of view, it is no different than any other lot within the city. So it won't have any effect on views and whatnot. So it's just taking advantage and trying to work with the steep slopes that exist there. Probably one of the hindrances of developing there in the first place, so.
Thank you. Any further conversation? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Item 7.1.5, Development Variance Permit for 333 Whale Road.
Thank you, Worship. Here, the applicant is requesting a development variance permit to vary section 10.2.6.7 of the Land Use Bylaw by relaxing the maximum lot coverage from 35% to 65%. And section 2.1.2.0 by relaxing the maximum allowable retaining wall height from 1.2 meters to 2.7 meters in order to facilitate the construction of a 100-unit seniors complex. The applicant has provided detailed drawings of the proposed retaining walls for the subject site that go up to 2.7 meters in height, and that staff have no objections to the requested variances, providing they are approved, subject to the condition that they do not impact the maintenance access to an existing storm drainage and sewer system located in a statutory right-of-way on the subject property. The applicant is asking for an increase in the maximum lot coverage because at the time of zoning, they requested the site coverage for the first phase only. They explained that there is not enough space on the site to have a stepped retaining wall, which would have been preferred. The proposed design will run approximately two-thirds of the way along the south property line and will run along the edge of the statutory right-of-way. Approximately half of the wall, retaining wall exceeds the maximum 1.2 meters in height, the height requirement, and will not be too obvious from the Whale Road entrance because it runs into the rear of the property. There was a recommendation by committee, and I so move. What's before us?
Seconder, please.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I feel like the negative Nellie here tonight, but I have concern because this requires pretty much a wholesale abandonment of our recently adopted retaining wall bylaw. This is going to give an eight-foot, 8.8-foot-tall retaining wall down the length of the side of the property, right adjacent to our sewer right-of-way, or right-of-way. And I think there are some serious concerns with a risk, there is planned to be a fence on the top of that wall, but that is a serious liability concern and one that I'm not prepared to support.
Counselor Nolt?
Yeah, through you to staff, I agree with the idea that this fence may be, or retaining wall may be a liability, but I would assume, and you can answer me if I'm wrong, that the liability would lie with the property owner and not with the city. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, I can't give a definitive answer in terms of liability, but I would have to say that this is a wall that's going to be located on private property. So my assumption would be that there would be, the main liability would lie with the private property owner. They have proposed that there be a railing along the wall, so staff aren't concerned that there's going to be a safety issue created by its construction.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Oh, sorry, Carol, I have a question.
Yes.
So through you to staff, there's, I haven't looked at this closely, so I just don't know what the answer is. There's no way to tier it, huh? Like, the way we were talking, four feet, four feet? That type thing? It has to be all one wall?
Construction of a wall in tiers would further constrain the site. It would impact the access and then the building. Certainly could be done, but it would impact the overall buildable area of the lot. And for that reason, the applicant has stated it's not feasible to provide tiering. I would like to remind council that this process allows for the creation of conditions. Staff have itemized a condition relative to the stat right-of-way, but certainly there can be conditions associated with the aesthetics of the wall as well. That is one of the intents of the retaining wall bylaw, so.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. So is there a way that the city could require that the fence be maintained on that wall? Because once, once it's built and approved, I would assume we wouldn't have any say in whether that fence was removed or kept intact, or if it needed maintenance, you know, what might ensue in the future.
Your Worship, there may be a, I'm not a lawyer, I just need to start off by saying that, but there may be a component of, by requiring that, there may be some taking on of liability. We would look at this as a, it's going to be a semi-public facility in terms of who can access the site, and I'd be extremely surprised if the owners allowed there to be a falling hazard at this site. There are a lot of private property situations where if railings were removed, it would create a hazard and the city doesn't get involved, and I would see this as similar in that, in that case.
Any further questions? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving into Finance and Admin, Report Director of Administration Regarding Animal Control Services Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll apologize in advance, I might not be able to go through this report.
I know. We have Counselor Logan standing by.
This, the Animal Control Services Agreement was last looked at in June of 2016, and at that time, council directed that staff undertake a comparison of service providers in 2017. Although there is an automatic renewal clause that would allow the contract to renew in 2018, there is a requirement to give notice of termination by September of this year. Our understanding from our CAO is if we do a comparison of our local service providers, it can't just be comparing the two, there's only two local providers. It can't just be that simple. It requires a formal tender process. So staff is just looking to council to find out, based on the detail that was provided in this report on the services provided by the CRD throughout 2016, which administration, finance, and the bylaw services division all feel is great value for the money, we wanted council to let us know if they wanted to allow the agreement to automatically renew for 2018, which would defer looking at a new four-year agreement next, till next year. If you want to direct staff to undertake a formal tender process for a new contract for years 2018 to 2021, or if council would follow the third option, which is based on the recommendation, and that would be to rescind the June 13th, 2016 resolution, to agree to apply the sole source purchase provision of the city's purchasing power delegation bylaw. That bylaw allows the Director of Finance actually to apply an exemption when there are a limited number of service providers, and when the goods and services are supplied or made available by another municipality. So although the CRD is not another municipality, it is another level of local governance, which of course is representative of municipalities. And the third part of that third option would then be to direct staff to enter into discussions with the CRD, working toward another four-year contract that would be a two-year term with two options to renew. Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation, Your Worship, before us.
Seconder? The one that's in your report?
Did we talk about number three?
Yeah.
Because there's one, two, or three.
The recommendation is based off.
Go to the next page now.
Yeah.
Got you on the right page? Need a seconder? Any discussion, council? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just reading it real quick. Could you go back, come back to me, if there's someone else?
I can take Counselor Day first.
Sure. My question is on the request for proposal idea. We did do that quite a few years ago, and what came back was very few responses and only really the CRD's track record was clear in terms that they could provide the services they were suggesting they could provide, mostly because of a lack of facilities. So I certainly do think that they are pretty much a sole source purchase in terms of nobody else has, you know, those pound facilities that are readily available. But I have to confess, I was busy reading budget stuff and didn't read this as thoroughly as I might have. So I'm a little confused, just in terms of, is that not a more expensive route to go than simply renewing our contract?
Is which more expensive?
The proposed recommendation where we would undertake RFP. Did I completely misread this?
Well, staff are recommending that we do the, we rescind the requirement to do the comparison and that we enter into a new negotiation with the CRD.
Yeah, I misread it. My bad, sorry.
That's okay, Counselor Martin.
Thank you. So I guess I need to clarify, so I'll tell you what I think. What I, yeah, I know, it's going to be shocking. What I recall from the last time we did this was that the other proponent, who I think was Victoria, our private contractor, was actually cheaper than CRD, but their approach was far more aggressive because they were making decisions around going out and charging people. If they caught them on the beach, they would make sure that they were getting the fine revenue or the licensing agreement revenue, and that they were going to get to keep it, and the city wasn't keeping as much. So we, we as a council specifically chose to go with CRD because we thought they were more friendly, and we made a philosophical decision to stay with CRD even though it wasn't fiscally the cheapest option. So I, to be honest, feel uncomfortable about making this a sole source contracting, allowing staff to make that decision, because I actually think it's a philosophical decision that this council should be making about where, how do we want to spend our money? Do we want to be the cheapest contract out there, or do we want to look at service and value for what we're getting? So I would actually be supporting motion two. So, uh, I would actually be supporting motion two versus motion three that's in front of us.
Madam Mayor? I don't recall exactly the numbers that came from, I believe it was in 2012. And it is true that the other company was offering for a lower rate. At that time, if I recall correctly, though, they wanted the city to bring dog licensing back in-house. That may not be the case now, but that's a very expensive and time-consuming undertaking. Uh, the 2016, um, service contract with the C R D was $61,200 a year. They increased their patrol hours so significantly over 2015 that we actually went from, if you take the annual fee divided by just the patrol hours alone, so not the staffing and the equipment and supplies and the pound facilities and legal fees that they cover, but just looked at patrol hours, in 2015 it averaged, uh, $75 an hour. In 2016, it's down to 47. Um, in addition to, uh, the $61,200 a year, um, the city actually keeps, uh, it was about $1,100 in impound revenues, I believe it was impound, and over $10,000 in dog licensing fees for the dog licenses that we actually sell ourselves. We don't have to turn that over to the C R D. And with the new perpetual license that they have, there's a number of, uh, vendors that are no longer selling dog licenses because there are a lot of easier options for them. So anybody from any municipality can actually purchase their dog licenses in Callwood, and Callwood will keep all of those revenues. So that was over $10,000, which offsets the $61,000 by quite a bit of money as well. Yep.
So just to, just to clarify, I don't think we're in a bad contract. I think we're, where I think we're, this is, but I just feel uncomfortable, uh, saying to staff, "Staff, you figure out what's best and go find a sole source contract with that", that this should actually be a decision at, at the council level. So that, that's where I'm coming from with that.
Madam Mayor? If I may, that's actually what we're looking for tonight, for counsel to tell us, they either want us to go to tender, or they support, or they agree, agree, don't agree, that the services we're getting are sufficient and we can just negotiate a new contract that would also come forward to counsel, of course, for approval, so.
Anyone else? Uh, the recommendation is, uh, number three in the options. Uh, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Uh, Finance and Admin, 7.2.2, West Shore R C M P Building, budget request from the City of Langford.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Finance is leading.
So you have before you, um, a fairly detailed report because, um, when staff went digging into this topic, it, um, had some interesting turns and twists that we weren't aware of. So I've given you a fair bit of background this evening, and this came up because, um, March the 10th, I received a very last-minute request from one of our partners in the West Shore R C M P Building for some capital monies. And this then, uh, created some interesting discussion at the last meeting, and staff were directed to bring back some additional information, which I have provided to counsel prior to this meeting as well, because it is fairly complicated. So you have in front of you the summary, some background, and basically a bit of an analysis. And getting into the different options, which is, um, this evening later on the agenda, we do have the five-year financial plan, our budget bylaws, if we sometimes refer to it, four-year approval. And in reviewing the minutes from our last council meeting, I did ask for clarification from counsel as to whether you wished me to include the amount of these expenditures in the budget, which you did provide direction to. So I have included that in the budget this evening, and in my recommendations, I have given a number of very detailed recommendations because I also had some concerns about the process, which has not been followed over the years. And I've been pretty clear about that. So my first recommendation is that we do in fact include the, in the five-year financial plan, the requested capital expenditures, that was attached to my report, a listing of them. And as a reminder, we have not, um, put any, um, money into that building of any significance over at least the last five years. We do have money set aside into a police, uh, capital building reserve that will cover these requests, so that is of some comfort. So I'm suggesting that we include it, the monies are available, but that we then get together with our two partners, which are the Langford, um, City of Langford and also View Royal. The last minutes I can find of any landlord committee meeting was in 2012, and, uh, that we, uh, revise those committee meetings and that we have some discussions because according to the agreement, we should actually receive annually these requests and we should get them by the end of November. And the idea is that gives us some time to ensure that there's some fulsome discussion and staff aren't, um, racing around at the last minute trying to get some information in front of counsel. So that's my second recommendation, so. And the third one is, once that committee has met, we bring back some minutes for your review. And, um, counsel then approves or disapproves the capital projects at that point, and payment is not made until that process is followed. So I won't, you've got the report in front of you, I don't want to rehash it, but if you have any questions, um, please ask.
Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. Similar to the Director of Finance, I have some concerns with the process, and, uh, I'm looking forward to the, the committee getting together and really talking about what their plan is because some of the, um, you know, I, I'm not sure if we've ever approved their building manager, but, um, that, that part maybe needs some work, uh, because I would like to feel that, uh, I'm being generous, uh, that some of the, uh, improvements might be really necessary, but that case hasn't been made. And, and I'd like to make sure that the improvements that we make are many well-spent, that have longevity, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the recommendation, um, that's here is, is excellent, and I would be prepared to move it.
Seconder then? Did I get a seconder? Jason, thank you. Um, any further discussion? Just to say that, uh, the process is less than desirable. And, you know, although the building was built with that third floor and expansion expected, uh, in time, um, what concerns me is there is a, uh, local municipal shared group that meets, and, uh, our last two meetings have been canceled because there have been no agenda items. So this, if there wasn't a landlord's meeting, would have been a second opportunity for them to provide information for discussion with owners who are partaking in the cost and expenditures of operating. So I too look forward to seeing these, make, these meetings, um, get back on a regular schedule, and, uh, maybe we need to be leading them off. I know that, uh, Langford is also going through some staffing changes as well there, so, um, hopefully that's where it gapped. With that, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? And Finance, final is the Financial Plan Bylaw Amendments from April 10th.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at our last council meeting, um, we did have the financial plan ready, and it was, uh, removed from the agenda. We noted that, uh, there were some items on there, in particular, um, it was brought to our attention by our Director of Engineering, that some things that in the past, uh, had been planned to be funded from D C Cs were not in fact eligible for D C C expenditure. And so we have gone back to review those items and to also make some other minor corrections to the bylaw. So just, um, perhaps in an abundance of too much detail, which I apologize for this morning, it's been, or this evening is a very finance-heavy agenda, but these are, uh, important items. So the D C Cs, for the current year, one of the main projects is on Machulson Road, and that's a section of road between Lagoon and Hatley, which consisted, just to remind you, consisted of sidewalks, some street lighting, um, road improvements, cycling lanes, and that totals almost a million dollars. So also on the agenda this evening, a little later, at item 8.1, is a report from our Director of Engineering, basically in support of, um, a grant application from the federal tax fund strategic priorities. So we have amended our proposed financial plan for this year for that particular project, and we are showing that the funding for that potentially can come from a conditional grant. Not all of the project was gonna come from D C Cs, just to remind you, some of it was from gas tax revenue. The good news is that if we in fact get this grant, it's 100% for the cost of the whole project. So that is a win-win. The other items into the future at this point are basically based on conditional grants. Those items are one year and two years out. We'll have another more detailed review next year when we look at the five-year financial plan. Our Director of Engineering is at a bit of a disadvantage because she has just joined us, and I know wants the time to do a fulsome review of some of the items that have been put in this, uh, particulars, some of these particular items in our five-year financial plan as to, um, the priorities and the actual amounts of funding that are itemized. So, um, for now, we are showing them as conditional federal grant. If we don't get them, they won't go ahead, but we have definitely got things in hand for the current year. So that's speaking to some, some adjustments on the D C C topic. The second topic that came up, and this did occur after our final budget meeting, which was the proposal that you heard some discussion on earlier this evening about contributions to the Affordable Housing Reserve, and direction has been given, um, that counsel, uh, would like to take the monies that are currently in that Affordable Housing Reserve and make a contribution to the two main projects, the one, um, with the Greater Victoria Housing Society and the, um, Pacifica Housing. So that in effect utilizes the funds that are in the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund spread over two years because we don't think both projects are gonna happen immediately this year. So that was to reflect that discussion that happened subsequent, sort of a subsequent event to our budget meeting. Any questions on that? That was just for your information so that it's clear.
Quite clear, but just a question on the mechanics of transferring those grants. Uh, when would we be awarding them to the developers because they are contingent on the rents being, uh, at the right level?
Kind of looking to our Director of Planning on that one, I'm not sure of the specifics.
Your worship, the, uh, contributions, uh, of this type are generally made, um, at the time that occupancy permit is approved for the project, so that's right at the end of the project, so the city has certainty that, uh, um, it's a viable project that is complete. Um, as previously stated earlier in the agenda, there's a covenant, um, to be put on title, that will require the, uh, units to be held. So, um, that's our thinking on this, uh, contribution, but, uh, we would likely have the conversation, uh, crystallized through that covenant, uh, negotiations.
Anyone else? Um, just one question from me. Does the R C M P, uh, building, now that we've done that one, does that have to be added into there at all?
I have included that in the financial plan bylaw that's in front of you this evening.
So it doesn't have to be in this?
As per your earlier direction at the last meeting, yeah. But I, I, I was very happy actually for the direction counsel gave me to go and do some digging because I was a bit astonished at some of the details, so thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to take the, a very brief moment to, um, talk a little bit, uh, just about, uh, cycle lanes and sidewalks, and my fondest desire is to have everybody on the same page with, um, the user-friendly, uh, trail guide and, and the, um, accessible, needs, especially around the school. So I have seen sidewalks, you know, uh, be mistakenly built with the wrong curb cuts and, uh, cycle lanes squished by them, et cetera. So I, I just really want to make sure that we put that lens on this project, and, and so just thought I'd stick my finger up for two seconds to say so.
Thank you. With that, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? That's the final one there. Moving into Transportation and Public Infrastructure, uh, report on federal gas tax funding strategic priorities.
Excuse me if I may, um, Madam Mayor, we did add item 7.2.4 to the agenda at the beginning of the, this evening's meeting.
Oh, correct. Thanks for bumping me up because it's not in my electronic agenda, it's right here on, so that's the handed-out, um, form in front of us, folks?
Yes. So thank you for your indulgence in, in allowing this addition. Um, we've had a very heavy agenda, as you can see, this evening, and I realize that I normally provide a cover memo with the property tax rates, so I have done that for your clarification this evening. Um, I think counsel finds it to be quite useful when we give you a complete summary of all the tax rates. I've given them to you this evening, not only for 2017, but for the, um, earlier year as well. And for those of you who I'm sure are interested in doing some analysis, you will note that our total mill rate has gone down fairly significantly, but that is to reflect the increase in the average assessed values. So that's just a high-level observation on that. So this evening you have in front of you the Property Tax Bylaw Number 1674, and this does go through the various tax rates that we, as the City of Callwood set. So when we go through our budget discussions, we look at the total costs of running our city. Those costs include our share of the Greater Victoria Public Library, as you know, they come and do a presentation, and also the West Shore Parks and Rec. It has become, it was, uh, practiced when I came that we actually take the costs of those two particular, um, lines of our business, you might say, the library and West Shore, and we break those out and they're shown separately on the tax notice. Last year, I had a look at the tax notice and I had a look at the tax rates and realized they didn't really line up, so we made a change last year to the way the tax rates were presented, so that we showed the City of Callwood tax rate, then we showed the library, then we showed the West Shore Parks and Rec. And in the summary that I've given you this evening, there's actually a column called Total Municipal that just allows you to do a little bit of a check. So that is the total money. When we multiply those various rates by the assessment basis, that gives us the amount of taxation that you, um, are being asked to approve in the budget bylaw. So I just wanted to kind of, um, bring all these numbers together. It's an awful lot of numbers, this is how they tie together, and this is why they're shown like this. On our bylaw, we also include the regional district and the regional hospital district rates, and the reason for that is because they give us a, a lump sum of money, and they say we need however many millions of dollars to run the regional district and to run the hospital. We then take that total lump sum, divide the assessment values into that, and come up with the mill rates. So we actually calculate the mill rates. That's why they're shown on the bylaw. So when you, we get to the bylaw section, you will see those headings that are numbered one through five, Roman numerals one through five. You will not see the school, the B C assessment, the Municipal Finance Authority, and the B C transit rates, and that's because they set their own mill rates, they give them to us. We have absolutely no calculation, no discretion over that. So just for clarity, I thought it's always nice to see a snapshot of the, the total amounts, so that's why that's being provided. One further reminder is that we also have to set a bylaw, um, if, each year we do it for our sewer user fees. We are not proposing any changes this year over last year, and that is, um, those amounts are set on per cubic meter of water consumed, and you will see that when we get to the bylaw. So there has been no, no changes there. Just as a reminder, um, the Property Tax Bylaw includes our various mill rates we levy to pay the City of Callwood's bills and also the other agencies. It also includes parcel taxes, so that's the amounts that we set to pay off the debts that are still outstanding for the different. that are still outstanding for the different local service areas. And I'm very pleased just to remind you again that in 2018, the Callwood South and Callwood West, those, that debt will be paid, and those parcel taxes will no longer need to be levied, and our total debt will be going down. That was in the financial statements this evening in one of the notes, showing a decrease in that debt. However, next year, as you know, we did take on some debt to pay for Callwood Central, but that, we will be levying a parcel tax next year. There was discussions between the developer and, who is mainly affected by Callwood Central and ourselves, and because the sewer trunk line and the pumping station is not fully complete, we will not be levying that parcel tax till next year. So that will be a change. So that basically is for information only, and just a few explanatory notes to help in case you had any questions about the bylaws.
Counselor Knoll?
Just a couple of comments on it. I'm very happy with the way this is presented. It all makes sense to me now. One thing I want you to note is that from 2016 to 2017, everybody's mill rate went down. Every agency except the CRD, whose mill rate went up by 12 and 1/2 percent. A good chunk of that is sewage treatment. It's gone from $104 assessment for the average house to 131. But given the fact that their assessment has gone up by 12 and 1/2 percent, and your property assessments have gone up an average, I believe, of 15% across Callwood, that means CRD is going to be taking a pretty large whack of cash out of every resident in Callwood.
Counselor Daye?
Thank you. Sort of a silly question, but I was just wondering what the average assessed value was for 2017 and for 2016?
So I'm going to take an average house, because that's what we have the most of in Callwood. So in 2016, the average house was valued at $450,000. And when we multiply that by the total mill rates that you have on this sheet of 6.7904, was $3,056. That's before the homeowner grant, okay? So we'll just look at the gross taxes. In 2017, the average home actually went up about 13 and 1/2 percent, so about $510,000, give or take. And remember, averages are always tricky, because not everyone is average, okay? But just to give you some ideas, and we multiply $510,000 by this year's combined mill rate of 6.1623, $3,143. That's an $87 increase, or 2.85% over last year, and Callwood's share of that was 2%. So just, I thought, thank you for asking that, because that would be one of my first questions if I was receiving a Callwood tax bill.
So we have a recommendation on that handed-out memo, folks?
Basically, it was more to introduce the bylaws to you, so that you consider them.
Receive this see?
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Now we can move on to Transportation and Public Infrastructure on the Federal Gas Tax Fund Strategic Priorities Fund. Nikki?
Thank you. I don't know that, here we go. Thank you, Your Worship. As the report before you indicates, a grant funding opportunity for the Machosen Road Improvement Project has been identified by the city's engineer. This funding is a bit different than usual grant funding opportunities, in that it will provide 100% of eligible costs associated with the project. It also allows for the project to start prior to the award of funding, as opposed to being shovel-ready but not yet started. As noted in Section 6, if Callwood's application is successful, there would be no cost to the city to complete the Machosen Road Improvement Project, other than the staff time to administer the project.
Excuse me, can we just get you to pull the mic towards you a little bit?
Now? Better?
A little bit.
Do you want me to go through that again, just to, sorry about that? First time with the microphone.
If the application is not successful, the cost to Callwood to pay for the project would be approximately $911,000, and that would be through a combination of deferred gas tax revenue for $346,000 and the community amenity reserve of $565,000. In other words, staff understand that this project is a high priority for the residents and for council, and we have identified an alternative source of funding should the grant funding not be awarded to this project.
Thank you. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. You answered one of my questions about the alternative financing, should we not be successful for the free money? Fingers crossed. I guess, just to follow up, because this has been a long time coming, and we've done, we've had a lot of dialogue with the neighborhood and made some commitments. So is there a plan or an opportunity to kind of update the neighborhood to let them know what's happening? And I ask that, because I know I'm fielding continuous questions about the state of the project, so.
We could definitely provide an update at the next Transportation Committee meeting, and I could also provide an update as well at a council meeting in the future with regard to where we're at with the project. As it stands right now, the project is tender-ready, so once we know that council has endorsed or supports our grant funding request, then we can get on with ensuring the application is ready, because as a condition of the application, we can't start work until the application has been registered, but we can start afterwards, and that would start by tendering the actual project, and that is a public process.
And just another follow-up, Your Worship. Do we know when we might hear whether we're successful or not?
Through, Your Worship, I do not know what their timelines are for letting us know.
Thank you.
Counselor?
Thanks. I think it's great that we have a couple of plans in place, and we certainly did hear at the Association of Anchor Island and Coastal Communities that this is the time to apply for this grant specifically, because this is their big push for green infrastructure, and I totally think this makes sense. It fits our trying to move outwards from the schools, so if we can get kids walking to school, riding their bikes, and also solve a major difficult spot on the Chosen Road with, what did the OCP planners call it? Friction? A little more friction in that area to help people realize that they need to slow down in that area, because we've had a number of emails over the years about cars landing in people's front yards, and deer hit on the road, and all kinds of gruesome stories. So I just totally support the project going forward, and I hope we are successful.
Anyone else?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you. And into our bylaw section this evening, starting off with item 9.1, bylaw number 1673, for first, second, and third readings, it is our five-year financial plan.
Move introduction, Your Worship?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Any discussion? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. So I won't be supporting the budget or this bylaw, and I just want to be clear on why. In the minutes of March 2nd, it basically reads 3.3, the review of core budget by department. The core budget was not discussed as it was reviewed on the March 1st, Special Committee, the whole meeting, and then if you go to the meeting of March 1st, which I was in attendance, I do not think that we reviewed core significantly. And I just want to share this, and I know I'm going to lose, so I just want to share philosophically where I'm coming from. Core is where this council gets to determine, from a philosophical standpoint, where this city's moving in the next five, 10, 20 years. I don't, I'm not talking about looking at measuring how many pencils or how much paper we're buying, but we need to systematically look at each department and go, is this department meeting our goals of what this council wants to achieve moving forward? And if we philosophically can't answer that question, then we haven't reviewed the budget thoroughly enough. And I know for myself at least, I philosophically cannot say I'm comfortable where we are going when I looked at this budget. So I'm not going to be supporting the budget strictly only because of that. It doesn't, has nothing to do with the tax rate lift or anything else, but it's strictly on a philosophical standpoint.
Thanks, Chris. Wow, I got somebody clapping for me. That's the first time in five years.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Counselor Daye?
Thank you. I can't say that I disagree with Counselor Martin, but I feel that as a council, it's our job to set up the process to make it work. So those feelings that we haven't looked carefully enough for you to feel comfortable, we needed to address that sooner and do the going through, and I think sometimes, you know, there's just a lot of different pressures, you know? I was thinking about the numbers at the time, felt that, you know, we were at an acceptable tax lift, we're not taking on a whole bunch of new services. I am comfortable with a lot of the work that's going on. There's always more work that could be done, and if we're not comfortable, it's our job as council to make sure that we do what's necessary to be comfortable. So I'm very sorry that we weren't able to do that, to reach a point where everyone around this table is comfortable, and I think that's a lesson for us all to take away, and I look forward to doing a better job next year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And thanks, Counselor Daye, for stealing some of my thunder. Just to say that, you know, finance worked really, really hard, and it was, you know, clear to me that we had been given instruction that there wasn't really much new or anything added into the budget. There was an overview of what was passed the year previous and how that worked out, and there was also an overview of what was to come in 2017. And maybe I fell into the same sort of position that, you know, yes, we're fine, we're moving it forward, it's incremental, we're not getting hit with a heavy-duty tax lift throughout all, and out of that, you know, if we need to do it better, Counselor Martin, you know, and if that's your preferred way of going through it, I'm sure that we can expand in those overviews to, you know, make that a departmental type. There was at one point where we had all that beat over with, at committee as a first level, and, you know, we've moved away from that, because that didn't seem to fill everybody's needs, so, you know, we're ever-improving, is the way I look at it. So, thank you.
With that, we are at second reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion does carry. Looking for third?
Move third.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item 9.2, bylaw number 1674, first, second, and third readings, for tax rate bylaw.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Any discussion? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I won't be supporting the motion again, but I want to again share with you the reason philosophically. Also, I want to apologize to council, because I know I wasn't here during the discussions at the last time that you guys were deciding on the rates to go. So a couple of things that I just want to share. One, I, when I ran last election, I did run on the concept that I would be supporting a lower business tax rate. So for myself, I cannot philosophically just vote in favor of that. But I wanted to just share something really quickly to council, and this is where I'm coming from, and this is where my stress comes from. If we were to, if we took a small business and we said it was worth, for easy math'sake, worth a million dollars, basically, in Callwood, they're going to receive a $14,700 tax on that million-dollar property. In Machosen, it's going to be $6,400. In Langford, it's going to be $8,600. For View Royal, it's going to be $9,900. So we're about $5,000 more than our neighboring communities, and we at some point have to address the business tax discrepancy with what the residential tax lift is. And if it's not done now, the question is when? And I don't think that it's going to get done on an election year, and I think at some point, yes, it does increase the liability to the average taxpayer, but at some point, I just cannot justify by saying they're getting $5,000 or $6,000 worth of more value by having a business in our community versus a neighboring community. And so, you know, I think there's a tough challenge in front of us, and I think at some point, you have to bite the bullet, and at some point, you have to take care of your business, as well as your residents. And if not now, when? And so I won't be supporting it, and I would be supporting a motion to actually look at decreasing a business tax.
Any other comments from council? At second reading, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Looking for third?
Move third.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1676, final reading, Property Tax Pre-Authorization Payment.
You missed 1675.
Oh, my, mine jumps here. 1675, first, second, and third readings.
Move introduction, Your Worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Now on to bylaw number 1676, final reading.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 9.5, bylaw number 1667, first and second readings only.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1677, for final reading. Repeal of Callwood Secondary Suite and Accessory Dwelling Unit Permit Procedures, bylaw.
Move final.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1668, first and second readings only for Callwood Land Use, bylaw number 151, 1989, Amendment Number 159.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Item number 9.8, bylaw number 1671, first, second, and third readings, for Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Second.
Second, second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move third. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And finally, on the agenda, 9.9, bylaw number 1672, for first, second, and third readings. Callwood Central Sewer Local Area Service. Callwood Central Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, Bylaw Number 480.
Move introduction, Your Worship?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Second or? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move permit?
Thank you, Counselor Logan. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion?